I'd like to call the October 4th Board of Commissioners to order. The first item on the agenda is the invocation by our county manager, Ms. Sharon Griffin. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Brighton Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord, please be with our elected officials, our first responders, and those who defend our nation. God our thoughts and actions to accomplish our work and goals this day. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, join me in a moment of silence. Amen.
Fair pledge by Assistant County Manager Mr. Ben Warren. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to acknowledge the elected officials here today. Sheriff Miller, thank you, sir, for being here. North Topsail Beach Alderman, Ms. Susan Mayers is here. Thank you for being here. And also Colonel Chris Thomas from the Sheriff's Office. Thank you, Colonel, for being here today. Make us safe. We ask all that's in attendance to please set your cell phone to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall not reserve responses. If any, the Commissioners' comment period will be allowed at the end of the agenda for Commissioners. With no other items to be considered, I would entertain a motion to adopt the meeting agenda.
Motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any Commissioner would like to have removed and discuss later?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Here none, motion and a second. Any, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item three is for a public comment. Ms. Griffin, has anyone signed up?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, no one has signed up this morning for the public comment period.
Thank you. We will now go to presentations. Ms. Carrie Sanders will present the Department of Social Services annual report. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you the highlights from the Department of Social Services Fiscal Year 2021 Annual Report. The department started developing our annual report about two years ago with the intent to educate and inform our citizens, our community partners, and you as our Board about the social and economic impact the department has on our community. COVID-19 impacted our department and our services over the last fiscal year and continues to do so, and that is highlighted throughout our full annual report. DSS is responsible for administering several state and federal mandated programs to our most vulnerable citizens. Food and nutrition services assist low-income households with their monthly food expenses. Benefits are issued through the electronic benefit transfer cards, or also known as EBT cards. During fiscal year 2021, over $55 million in benefits were issued to Onslow County citizens and presumably spent in Onslow County. This dramatic increase from the previous fiscal year is a direct result of the waivers that were approved by the federal government in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Waivers that were approved increased monthly supplements to households as well as gave additional supplemental benefits to households. Also during this time, the pandemic EBT program was created, which assisted school-aged children with food assistance that were receiving free and reduced lunch. And this really was in result of schools going to virtual learning. Waivers also allowed previous ineligible citizens to receive benefits, such as students of higher learning and able-bodied adults without dependents or children. The department saw an increase in the average number of applications per month during the fiscal year, and in one month alone, we had over 1,100 applications. This next slide reflects the average number of children and households that received food and nutrition benefits in comparison to the previous years, and as you can see, there's significant increase. DSS also administers several, two different energy programs that are largely federally funded to assist income-eligible families with heating or cooling crisis. The Crisis Intervention Program runs throughout the fiscal year or until funds are exhausted. And we saw an increase in the number of applications as well as our allocation for these services. The Low Income Energy Program, Low Income Energy Assistance Program, is also one of our energy programs that assists income-eligible citizens. Last year, we processed over $900,000 in payments to our local utility companies. Both these energy programs, the payments go directly to our local utility companies. We also received additional funds in this program to make, at our request, to help meet the needs of our citizens. We also saw our Medicaid applications increase dramatically during the fiscal year. The economic impact of our Medicaid programs on our community is significant. Over $76 million was paid to Onslow County medical providers in our community. Of our Medicaid recipients in Onslow County, approximately 52% are children, and a little over 17% are the aged, disabled, or the blind. The department is required by law to provide child protective services to all children alleged to be abused, neglected, or dependent. This includes the screening of reports, assessing children and families, and providing involuntary services to families once abuse, neglect, or dependency is found. We screened over 3,000 reports last fiscal year and assessed over 3,500 children in our community. We saw a dramatic decrease in reports during the times that children and families were the most isolated during the pandemic. But we ended the fiscal year almost equally in the, equaling the previous fiscal year's numbers. And although we don't know what the long-term impacts of the pandemic will bring, we did experience an increase in the severity of abuse and neglect and dependency in our community. We had over a 100% increase in the number of children that were brought into the department's custody over the previous fiscal year. And the main reason children came into the department's custody was due to untreated mental health and substance abuse issues as well as domestic violence. Of course, a lot of times, it's a combination of several of those. We did successfully achieve permanence for 114 children in our custody during the fiscal year, and permanence is achieved through reunification with parents or their caretakers, through custody or guardianship with relatives or other kinship providers, or through adoption. Because of our success in permanence for children, our foster care numbers have remained pretty consistent or stable throughout the years. One of our biggest challenges in this area is really keeping children in our community when they come into the department's custody. We currently have 40 licensed foster homes through our department, and we have 148 children in our custody. So we do, we make all efforts to keep our children in our community, in their school system, and with their fan, you know, within their connections of our community, but we need more foster homes. At times when we saw a decrease in our child protective services reports because children and families were isolated, we also saw a significant increase in our adult protective services reports. Adult protective services assist our disabled and elderly, adults with disabilities who may be abused or neglected by a caretaker, may be neglecting themselves, or may be exploited. We also saw an increase in the number of adult guardianship cases by the department. DSS becomes guardian of disabled adults when they are deemed incompetent by the court and there is no family or other supports willing or able to care for them. We are becoming guardians of a much younger population that are disabled developmentally or have mental health issues and are noncompliant with their treatment. And one of our biggest challenges in this area is trying to find placement for those disabled adults. This slide highlights a few of our programs and the economic impact those programs have in our community. Childcare subsidy provides daycare assistance to low-income families, and those payments go directly to the licensed facilities in our community. Also, child support, we contract that service with Young Williams, and they provide child support enforcement for custodial appearance. And also, I've highlighted Medicaid and food and nutrition. Although I only highlighted a few of our program areas, I encourage you and our public to review our annual report in its entirety on the DSS website, the Health Department website, and the county website. One thing, one last thing I want to highlight is our DSS employees. Our employees have gone above and beyond over the last fiscal year and continue to do so every day. Our dedicated employees persevered through continual changes to state and federal mandates, higher caseloads, and added responsibilities. Regardless of the program area, whether determining eligibility or ensuring the safety of others or providing supportive services to the department, they have done an extremely exceptional job. They know our mission is to serve our citizens, and they do so with professionalism, grace, and kindness every day, and I'm honored to be their director. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
The, you did mention about kids in custody from being removed from homes for various reasons. Are we short on families to take care of them, or are we up to par on that?
We do, when children come into the department's custody, we always look to family members first to try and place them with family. When there's no family in the area, they go into licensed foster homes. We absolutely have a need for more licensed foster homes, and we are diligently recruiting for more foster homes in our area.
What percentage of the kids that we've taken, and you may not know that, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but how many family members take care of their family, you know, if they go to grandma or grandpa's house? What percent of our kids that's having to go in foster care, go with family, do you know? And you don't have to.
I don't have the exact percentage. I know about 44% of our children are placed outside of Onslow County. Now, some of those are with relatives, some of those are out of state with relatives, but I don't know the exact number that are with. You know what? I do. Out of 148 children, we have currently 45 children with kinship or unlicensed placements, and those are typically family members.
Do we compensate the family members that take care, takes care of them?
If they want to get licensed, and we always encourage all family members to get licensed, so there is a financial component to that, we can, but typically, no. We, we do provide like clothing vouchers and different things, but there's not a monthly stipend for those family members. They are sometimes eligible for economic services, though.
Well, I want to take this opportunity to thank the, your department and all of your folks for doing what they do. I know that the COVID-19 has been extremely difficult for their programs, not just your program, but the Health Department and our health, the care, healthcare workers and all that, so I want to commend you and your department for doing what you're doing and trying to take care of our kids and all the people that needs help.
Thank you very much.
The waivers which have resulted in expanded benefits you talked about, are they still in effect, or was that a temporary thing just last year?
They say they're temporary, but they have continued to extend the deadline for them. We don't really expect some of those waivers to end until the public health emergency is, ends.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. We are now move on to item five, project ordinance.
Parks and Recreation Director, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. The New River Waterfront Park was severely damaged during Hurricane Florence. An assessment of the damage was performed and an RFP was released for the necessary repairs. The lowest responsible bid received for the repairs was $498,632. Additionally, staff received a quote for $40,000 for the professional services associated with the project design and permitting. Staff have worked with both FEMA and the county's insurance provider to secure the funding to make necessary repairs. Unfortunately, FEMA has been unwilling to provide funding assistance for the park repairs. The county's insurance proceeds for the project total $100,000, which is the maximum insurance payout. The balance of the funding, $438,632, will consist of all tourism funds, which were approved in the current fiscal year's budget. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve the proposed project ordinance and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I will ask you this, the, this was damaged during Florence, wasn't it? And FEMA's saying we're not getting, we're not going to get reimbursed at all from FEMA?
That is correct. And so we have been waiting around on the KAMA permits and having the funds this year to, to go ahead and move forward with the project.
Do you have the KAMA permits in place?
We do.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Here none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lease for Albert Ellis, A.R.I.N.C. Mr. White.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The Air Inc., a division of Rockwell Collins, has provided digital in-flight and ground communication services to the airlines and the FAA since 1929. Air Inc. has a ground station at OAJ, has had a ground station for over a decade, and is currently located in the executive terminal. The previous five-year lease for that site expired on August 19th, 2021, and Air Inc. has requested an additional five-year lease agreement. The standard county lease agreement was used, and it would expire on August 18th, 2026. Staff respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners approve the five-year lease agreement, and if approved, authorize the chairman to sign the agreement on behalf of the county.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Griffin, appointments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We have one appointment today. It's for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. As you know, the North Carolina Department of Public Safety partners with juvenile crime prevention councils in each county to galvanize community leaders locally and statewide to reduce and prevent juvenile crime. All JCPC board members are appointed by this county Board of Commissioners, and there is a current vacancy for seat number 18, which is in the Parks and Recreation category. Ms. Caitlin White, who was just before you, has expressed an interest in filling this vacancy. She is currently our Onslow County Parks and Recreation Director and resides in Hampstead, North Carolina. Her application has been certified and is on file in the clerk's office. We respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners appoint Ms. Caitlin White in seat number 18, Parks and Recreation, for a two-year term expiring on June 30th, 2023, and authorize a waiver of residency.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We are now at item seven. There was nothing moved to item seven. Item made is Ms. Griffin's comments. Ms. Griffin, floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Chairman Brighton Commissioners. I'll start out by reinforcing the kudos that went out to Carrie Sanders. Being a Department of Social Services Director is no easy work, and she's done a fantastic job. I wanted to point out, and, and I think it was, it was clear, but despite the tremendous increase in the service demands during COVID, we have kept up the same quality and efficiency in responding to that with the same staff. So just because the federal waivers are extended and we have to provide more services and take more applications, we didn't get more people for that. And in fact, DSS, because it's in contact with the public, was pretty deeply impacted with COVID quarantine and with COVID illness, so she was often down. A lot of staff and people just did whatever it took to get the job done. And she actually loaned out some of her staff, as all of our departments did, to help out with the vaccine clinic and other COVID efforts, so we do applaud her for a year well done, more than a year. But on the COVID update, the good news is we are slightly down in our daily incident of, of new positive COVID cases. We're at 133 per day right now. We were up at around 200 last week, but today, we've had 205 new COVID-positive cases. That brings us to 29,184 positive cases in Onslow County for the duration of the pandemic, and only 26,079 of those have been cleared. The really disheartening information is that we have had five new fatalities just since Thursday afternoon in Onslow County residents from COVID-19, and we've lost so many people to COVID-19 at this point. Four of those were under the age of 65 and some in their 40s, and one of them was over 65, and all of these folks had some sort of pre-existing health condition, which most people do at that point in life. The state's at 7.9% positive, Onslow County's 11.7. Looking ahead, we often look at our hospital to see where they are. This morning, Dr. Penny told me they had 29 COVID-positive patients in-house, but nine of those are in ICU, and everyone in ICU, all nine of those are on ventilators, so that's not good news. But the numbers overall have come down some. We would like to remind the public that if you are immunocompromised, regardless of what type of vaccine you received, you can come in and get your third dose if you are immunocompromised. If you need a booster shot and you are compliant with the requirements for that, you can also call our Citizens Phone Bank at 910-989-5027. We want to thank Lisa Whitman-Grice and the rest of the team that has handled our Citizens' Phone Bank now for two years, in addition to their other duties. They're still getting 150, 200 calls a week about COVID-19. We are authorized to give Pfizer boosters, and the FDA has scheduled a meeting on the 14th and 15th of this month to consider Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson. So we think pretty soon those who are interested in boosters will be able to get those in every age category that is, that is permitted. So that's all I have, unless you have questions for me. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you much. We'll start Commissioner's comments with Commissioner Buchanan.
Thank you. Carrie, I want to thank you and your staff, but one of the things about this Board of Commissioners, we're pretty much always looking out for our employees, and this Commissioner always looks hard as I can. And as you noticed recently, we gave you $1,000 plus a 2% increase. That's how much we think of our employees, and we'll keep doing that because of the hard work that you do and all of our employees on this government center and everybody across this county that work for us. And the one thing that's rewarding for me is the hard work that you all do, and I will always, always thank you for that and do whatever I can to make sure everything works well for our employees. Thank you.
That it?
Yep.
Commissioner Knapp.
I went the other way. I really don't have anything to say, just COVID is still out there, just if you haven't taken, haven't had a vaccination and you're still considering, I highly suggest you go call our Health Department or your healthcare provider and, and get the shot, because it's just, the shot seems to be working for most people, and I just can't stress that enough, but then again, it is your choice. So I just want to thank DSS for everything that you've done, and I want to thank our Health Department for the continuing efforts for COVID-19, and I know you guys have battled that for the last year and a half, two years as well, so this must have been real difficult. And other than that, I just want to thank everybody for coming out this morning, and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Price.
Don't really have anything this morning, just thank you all for being here and have a good afternoon.
Commissioner Scott.
Now, Ms. Sanders, as always, thank you for what y'all do. Really appreciate it. I think our bike trail's going to be open this weekend. This coming weekend is the ninth mountain bike trail, so it's going to be great. I'm going to be out there with my mountain bike. Hopefully, I won't get hurt, but I really appreciate everybody coming out, and I appreciate the hard work from our employees. But most of all, I thank the citizens of Onslow County for keeping us strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did get to attend over the weekend the first annual Veterans Powwow at the fairgrounds. It was a, it was a pretty neat presentation. I understand that they, that they sold out one of our local hotels, so congratulations on a, on a wonderful event that they put on over the weekend. Last week, I had the privilege of attending my last Onslow Memorial Hospital Board meeting. In 2018, our community college was struggling financially, and this Board of Commissioners was very concerned about the, our, our local community hospital, and asked me to serve on the board in order to, to keep the Commissioners informed and provide the hospital board with the Commissioners' perspective on issues at the hospital. At that time, the hospital was suffering from terrible cash flow, less than several days of cash on hand. They had very dated receivables, excessive expenses, high cost of services, and negative customer service ratings. At the time, the hospital, we sustained, in, in my time at the hospital board, we sustained damage from Hurricane Florence, and we've struggled with the COVID-19 pandemic. Yet during this time, we were able to cut costs and increase revenue. We made difficult financial decisions. We formed a management partnership with UNC Health that's helped us reduce expenses and reduce our dated receivables and implement new quality service measures and attract new providers to Onslow County. We increased our cash flow. As of last week, we're up to 120 days of cash, and we hired a new chief financial officer and a new chief medical officer. and a new Chief Medical Officer, which along with UNC Health is help, Health, is helping to bring new perspectives into our local community hospital services. I learned a lot on the hospital Board, and the hospital finances and services and administration are a major challenge in the, in the healthcare system these days, and they face challenges every day. I'll continue to support the hospital in every way that I can. I want to thank the hospital Board and thank this Board for allowing me the opportunity to serve on the hospital Board, and I know that the new Board will continue the progress that we've made, and look forward to a bright future for our local Onslow Memorial Hospital. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Chairman. Ditto, thank you Carrie for a great job and the task that you've, in front of you and what you've been able to accomplish in the past, and a thank you to the Onslow County Emergency Services. They do a great job responding to our sporting events, and Friday night, we had one of those at Southwest High School, and EMS responded on scene and took care of the young man and did a great job with, working with his family and how to get to the trauma center at Naval Hospital, so a thanks to our emergency, emergency medical staff for what they were able to take care of. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. My job as a Chairman is to ask for adjournment, and all in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We adjourn.[1777.73][1777.73]